Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council in the council chambers at West Valley City Hall. Note that all members are in attendance and I'll turn the time over for the Inside the City video.
...for about 10 minutes and then it was just like any other vaccine, love, didn't feel anything.
Welcome to our new Parks Department shop.
To the world, you may be one person, but to one person, you may be the world, and she is my world. And I'm glad she's still here.
West Valley City has tried to recognize the value of every one of our citizens, everyone who lives in our city. This is another great example of reaching out to many different parts of our community.
People tend to think that child abuse has a certain face or space, income level or race. It does not.
Let me show you. In an area like this, water is going to absorb right into this grassland.
Stay calm. You need to cover your face, which is the most important part, and stopping onto the ground, drop and roll. Benson, your fur's on fire. Your fur's on fire. Stop, drop and roll. Good boy.
Yeah, I live very close. I live just on the other side.
I tell you what, we'll follow you home and unload it for you. Take us two minutes. Take us two minutes, trust me.
I think it's surprising the amount of people that just absolutely fell to yield. I think that's the most surprising thing. That on average, we're probably around 100 violations per operation.
Hi, welcome to West Valley City in Taylorsville Animal Read Along. This is Peanut Butter. Hi Peanut Butter.
Challenging, not knowing exactly what to plan for with West Fest this year. The committee did an excellent job in trying to plan for whatever might happen, always being aware of what the county was releasing as far as information, so we were planning appropriately.
But as they came out of that, they came out with a higher level of confidence in their equipment and in their abilities to work through difficult situations. So it was great to see them overcome that and build that. We've also been able to have some more time with fire and smoke and putting them in hot environments.
Thank you Captain Monson. You've educated and trained us well. We'll take it from here. WNEV 607, clear all fires. Please advise on August 14th, 10:00 AM.
To call you our brother and our friend, and we will always cherish the short time we had with you. Officer Brotherson, your voice will take it from here.
Oscar 444, will now show you 1042 for the last time. It's been a pleasure.
I'm very pleased to see it come to fruition. This is the first phase. We're not done yet. We're going to do more. We're going to honor all veterans, but we wanted to make sure that the primary purpose, the part that got the most visibility, was for those who paid the ultimate price. Don't forget. Don't forget.
We have a new program that we're starting. It is called Operation Recess. This is kind of the intro to that. Next year, we'll start it. We'll go out to each school. Each elementary school will start, hitting two schools a week, just going out, meeting the kids during recess.
What we have set up here is our cone course. The officers, it consists of a lot of backing up, some serpentine, a lot of just practical driving skills that they have to do.
Thank you. Can we open the doors? They seem to be locked. Okay, thank you. So we have our minutes from December 14th. Do we have a motion or comments on the minutes?
Second.
Move for approval of those minutes.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We now have our time for our public comments. Our first person is Mark, Mike Markham.
Okay, Mike Markham. First, I want to give kudos to Dan Johnson and his team for which I call fabulous snow removal over the holidays. They've been out in the neighborhood and I seen them going through sand and again today because we have some ice and some shady spots. Did a great job there. There was a, and this kind of goes back to what was talked about in the study meeting about the media. There was a house someplace in West Valley, I've never been there, that usually puts on a giant Christmas show. Lots of lights. People come from all over to look at it. And on the news, this person said that he was advised by city employees not to do it this year because of our new parking regulations. Well, to me, that was bad press. Hopefully, our parking people have enough common sense that if there's something like that going on, they're not going to give a person a citation. So that's bad press coming from within the city. We, you know, we get enough bad press on our own at times without city employees making those statements. Another thing I wanted to bring up is, I'm going to start doing my very best to stop speaking up. That's not going to be easy. I'm kind of a control freak. I'm kind of everything, but I've decided there's really no reason for me to have to go out and do what we have city employees that are supposed to be doing. I don't know that I should have to be going out and coming here and reporting violations in my neighborhood. We have people that are employed, keyword employed, by the city to go out and do that. I don't think the citizens should have to do the West Valley City's employees' job, keyword again, employee. But in my definite, in my feeling is there's a lot of difference between an employee and a worker. There's a lot of people that want to be employed. We don't have a lot of people that want to work. They want the paycheck. They want to get it pretty easily. So I'm going to do my very best to sit back, not say anything, let things kind of go, I guess, the way we want it to go as a city. And hopefully, maybe we'll start getting some step up and some, some better participation by, by some of the city employees to get out and do their job. One thing I really liked, Karen, that you brought up some time ago, was that we needed to have job descriptions for everybody to know what their job is within the city and make them accountable for that job to get done. If that job's not getting done, then we need to find somebody that can get out and do the job. We don't need to employ people that just want to be employed. So hopefully, with some of the new, within the city, we can sit back and we can look at different areas and make sure the people that are employed by the city are actually working for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Bissack?
Jim Bissack, West Valley City resident. Why keep speaking up? Because otherwise, I'd be the only one here. I like hearing from you. So Mayor Lang, you got to remember to address you in your proper term. It's great seeing you in that seat. Councilman Harmon, great seeing you up there. Councilman Norfield, Councilman Fittisiamu, great campaign. Glad to see you got reelected. A lot of promises were made. I expect, the citizens of West Valley, expect you to hold our employees accountable for their jobs, like Mike said. But if, and it starts at the top. You guys need to hold Mr. Pyle accountable. He will hold his directors accountable. His directors will hold the assistant directors, et cetera, et cetera. If you're not holding him accountable, the rest of them are getting away with giving you false misleading information. I had a whole presentation tonight about the code enforcement. I did grammar requests, got all the real numbers on courtesy notice and all this stuff. And you guys will be shocked. I will do it next week because this is more of a celebration day for you guys and lady and where you're sitting. As to the light displays and stuff like that, as the Chair of the Clean and Beautiful Committee, we went out and gave 10 awards. And I gave out six of them throughout the city. And there are so many beautiful displays, and I think we can, we can take that further. And so the misinformation doesn't get out there to citizens. And there's some of these guys that start in June, putting up their displays, I found out, and they're beautiful. The only negative thing I want to bring up again, and I've been bringing it up for now for over four months, the fitness center, men's locker rooms, pool areas, basketball courts. Basketball courts are not supposed to have food or drinks on them. Go in there, spilled all over the floor continuously. Locker rooms are not being cleaned. Still looks like feces on the walls in the showers. Shower curtains are disgusting. All but two showers are filthy, dirty. The only reason why the two showers that are sort of clean are because nobody uses them because the drains overflow if you use them. And the guys that go in there know that. Right now, this time of year, people are going in to the facilities because New Year's resolutions. This is supposed to be one of our crown jewels, and management doesn't seem to care about it. They, they just continue to let it go. And now it's just kind of, there's graffiti written on the men's bench in there. There's a locker with mud and stuff in it. I mean, mud on the walls. It's just, it's getting ridiculous and it's getting worse, not getting better. The only thing that they've done in the last four months that I've been complaining about is the trash when you're going in and out. They're keeping a pretty good control on that. And the Q-tips that somebody was collecting on the side of the lockers has finally disappeared because that's really, really gross. So, but congratulations again on our elected council, and I look forward to being a vocal voice with you guys.
Thank you. Randy LaSuro?
Good evening, everybody. If I look tired, it's because it's getting worse. That's enough of that. This has been going on way too long. We should not allow this to happen in our city. There's a problem with this all over. Salt Lake's dealing with it. I don't know what they're doing, but they know they got a problem. I know we got a problem. I'm angry now. I'm tired. Last night, I got three hours sleep in intervals. Hour here, half hour there, 45 minutes there. What do you do? We got retired people in my community. I've been here for 47 years in West Valley. I'm retired. My wife's retired. We got grandchildren. There's babies. There's mothers in our neighborhood. All these people need sleep. In the daytime, I could care less. These are young adults, and some of them are old. Why they're doing this, I don't know. I have no idea. We got to find out how we're going to take care of it. I don't think it's none of nobody else's business but ours. I'd love to go take this to the media, every one of them channels out there, and tell them we're not taking care of our problem here. But I'm not going to do that. I'm expecting you guys. You're the brains. I don't know what else to say. I've been here, many council meetings over and over and over. And all's I can do is talk. I don't, I don't hear feedback. I don't see it. I'll tell you when I do see it, is when I can get three to four hours sleep solid because I've bothered dispatch. And West Valley's jumped on it when they can. I know this is low priority. And when they go out there, and I know they've been out there because it's quiet for that many hours. My older grandkids that live with us get up and then go to work. They say, Grandpa, we slept for four hours last night or five hours. Woo-hoo. Those kids and me and my wife and the neighbors' babies, everybody needs, come on, minimum of seven hours, right? I think I'm fine with six. This is my last time coming here. I've been coming to a lot of these council meetings. I, I don't think the media needs to know this. Whether they take it on or not, I have no idea. But I think we ought to put our foot down. We should not allow this to happen. From 10 o'clock to 6 o'clock in the morning, this is just not right. And our finest lawyer, they know what's going on, but they're busy doing other things, more important things. These kids, young adults, if they, if, if the police had somebody like me sitting out there watching what I'm, just shoveling snow, ice, whatever, and watching these, there's cars, vans, trucks, that aren't involved in the racing and these loud muffler cars. They're communicating their, their lookouts all over my neighborhood, all over 4,000 west, all over 4,100 south. And I could drive, I told you knew me. I've told you guys before, I could drive down 35th South from Redwood Road to the corridor, and I could spot, I bet, I bet you I could spot out 50 of these rice rockets, whatever they call them, whatever, race cars. They're staging all over, 7-11s, Harman's, Carl's Jr., and they're just sitting there waiting and talking to each other, communicating each other, waiting for the next dart out. Want to go this way, want to go that way, or two race down the same way. It's just all different directions. It's got to stop. So, thank you for your time. You guys have a good evening. Happy New Year. Everybody get backstage.
Thank you.
Oh, real quick, sorry.
Yep, five seconds.
Our buddies, my friends, my heroes, along with our officers, they live a block down the street, down 4,100. Fire station number 72. We take them food. We take them homemade tortillas and homemade, you know, we're always feeding them because they're busy. They're there 24/7. They hear it. It drives them nuts when they're trying to sleep at night. What do you do?
Thank you. Mr. Pyle?
Thanks ma'am. I have no comments tonight. Thank you.
Anyone on the council?
Yes, I do. I have a couple of them, sorry, a couple of them. The first one is, I believe, my Markham, he mentioned about five feet from the driveway. I watched that movie too, and I call a part a little bit about that. I would love to do is, I would love to revisit this ordinance again, and we have the council member District 3. So we can sit down, can visit this ordinance again. The second item I want to do is, I want to ask, I think I brought it up last meeting, but I think because Mayor Ron Bigelow is not here anymore. So Mayor can land right here. Hopefully, she maybe can pull it off for us. Who asked Colin Jacob, the chief, work with Randy, try to find out about this, and then maybe we put in a potential agenda for, for next meeting, so we can discuss about the noises with the rocket or race car here. He came up about three, four times already. I think we, we need to do something about this, and I brought it up last time, but I think to carry away because the holidays and other things, I understand. But I think we wanted to have that in a future agenda for next, next week for that one.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to skip back because I did not ask if there was anyone else in the audience that would like to speak. So I'll get this down. Mr. Curtis?
Thank you, Mayor. Daryl Curtis, 3860 South Marcia Drive, West Valley City, Utah, 4128. I just wanted to talk briefly about the, the tax increase that we received, the $3. You call it a fee, but I've always been told if it walks like a duck and talks like a duck, it's a duck. And so it is a tax increase of $3. I know that's, doesn't sound like a lot, but some of my neighbors are, are in the fixed income and so forth. And I also wanted to know, and I know you can't answer the question, but is this going to replace the existing funds that you have? Because I read through the ordinance and I didn't see anything in there that said this will supplant, this will enhance, this will add to the budget for our streetlights. So, and I, I work for the government, and we had a situation where an office was wanting employees, and they said, why don't you do something? And I was in a position where I said, you know, there's nothing we can do because if we give you an employee, you're going to take the employee out of the area that you're in and move it in somewhere else in the office. And they said, oh, we wouldn't do that. Well, we did. We gave them an employee, a contract employee, and they did. They moved the position to another place in the office. So the question I have, or the concern I have, is this tax increase, is it going to replace what we have out right now, or is it going to enhance what we need? And I, I bring this up and I say it's a tax increase because I, I'm concerned also, because one of my neighbors came to city council back in November when there was an increase in, in property taxes. Yes, it wasn't an increase in taxes. The percentage stayed exactly the same, but the value of his property went up, so he is paying more in taxes. So you can say it's not a tax increase, but he is paying more each year in taxes. And he was concerned that his taxes went up, and I, I know there was a couple of members of the council that said, we are not raising taxes. We did not raise your taxes. And yet, this ordinance was, was passed, I think on April 20th. It is raising taxes. So there is something about truth and taxation, truth in making sure that people know where the money is going. And I also, if you drive along 5200 West between 41st South and 35th South, they have a lot of streetlights. They're really good. I've always wondered, why did they get so lucky? I mean, it wasn't just because of new subdivision, because I know the Fazio, that subdivision there came into play. However, there's a lot of existing homes and so forth. So somehow, they got a lot of streetlights without a tax increase of $3. So how did they get it? And then the rest of us, where I live, there's no streetlights. There's five houses on each side of the street. It's completely dark. Yeah, if you go down further to the corners and so forth, there, there is lighting, but, but right there where I live, nothing is completely dark. If we as neighbors did not keep our porch lights on and, and so forth, it would be very, very dark on the street. So I just wanted to just bring up the concern that I have. And is this the last fee that you're going to, to ask to be increased? I believe in sidewalks. I believe fixing the sidewalks is going to be something that we need to do. I brought up before where I live on 60th West and 64th West, there is Hunter Junior High School, and the students, there is no sidewalk on 64 West at all. And there's just sidewalk on the east side of 60th West, but the students will walk in the middle of the street in the winter because of mud and snow. So, you know, I, I don't, I, I just think you need to look at your, your budget, your priorities. I understand there's a new position that they want to add, and, and, and so able to find money somehow for new positions, but how about existing issues that affect us, the citizens of West Valley? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move along to our public hearing. Mr. Pyle, would you like to introduce it, please?
Yes, thank you ma'am. So every quarter, the city has a budget opening process in which we consider things that have happened during that quarter. You might have a project that has extended past fiscal year. You might have a new grant, or you might even have an unexpected expenditure outside of the normal budget process. So that budget, or that quarterly budget process is for that purpose, to consider those items, and that is what is before you tonight.
Okay, and some of these are rollovers from projects we haven't completed, and then extra grants. Okay, so we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to comment on this issue?
Jim Bissack, I'm just going to compliment again the Finance Department on how well you guys put together this information. Going back three and four years ago, when you guys were bringing these proposals, there was hardly little information. And to where we're at right now, it says exactly what it is, that it's a rollover, it's not affecting the budget, et cetera, et cetera. Makes it a lot easier for the citizens to be able to understand what's going on, and we don't have to look through 19 or 21, 22 pages of stuff for the little star and then try and guess, okay, is that really affecting the budget? Is it a rollover or what? So I want to thank Jim and his crew back there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and put it to the council for comments or a motion.
I move for approval of ordinance 21-68.
I move for approval of ordinance twenty-one dash sixty-eight.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And we'll turn the time over to Ms. Kamic for a roll call vote.
Councilman Fatisi Amu.
Hi.
Councilman Harmon. Councilman Hune.
Hi.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Uh we have one more item, consent agenda. Mr. Pyle.
Ma'am, it's just a one item consent agenda, and it's a temporary construction easement associated with a small payment to the property owner of four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or a motion from the council?
I would move to approve an ordinance or resolution twenty-one two six two fifteen.
A second.
Thank you. Any more comments? Okay, we'll turn it over to the city recorder.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Hi.
Councilman Harmon. Councilman Fatisi Amu.
Hi.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We have no need for a closed session, so our business is complete. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Three more meetings.
Yes, after this one. So we have, stick around. We have three more, but I don't have to conduct them, so. All right, motion to adjourn?
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will now move on to our auxiliary meetings.
I call to order the redevelopment agency meeting. And note that all are present, and we have the next item, which is the approval of our minutes from December fourteenth.
Move to approve the minutes of December fourteenth, RDA special meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Is there a report from Mr. Pyle?
No report for the RDA, sir. Thank you.
Our next item of business is to elect a chair and vice chair for twenty-twenty-two. And we could take a nomination for both at the same time or individually. I leave it up to you.
Okay, I would nominate Scott Harmon as our chair and Tom Hune as our vice chair.
Second on both.
Any other nominations or comments? We'll do a roll call vote, or we can just vote verbally. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. That concludes our business. So one final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved, and all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned and ready for the next meeting.
Called the, the, call to order the Housing Authority tonight, and the roll calls to all the members that are here tonight and approval of the minutes, uh, June first, two thousand twenty-one, and we need the motion and second for that.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, and we need a sec, okay, and a mayor's second. So those are in this favor, this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's see, so none. This motion passes unanimously. Um, number, number, item number four, report of executive director. Does anyone think here tonight, Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, sir. No report.
Yeah, thank you. And item number five, new business, we have A and B right here, this uh elected chair for this housing authority in this year to twenty-twenty-two and vice chair this year twenty-twenty-two. So I will turn over to the council.
I would nominate Lars Norfelt as chair and Jake Fatisi Amu as vice chair for the Housing Authority.
So, so I have a motion from Don Christensen and a second from Scott Harmon there. Those are in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? None, so this motion passes unanimously. And the last one to adjourn is, we need a last motion for this one.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you so much, Mayor, and all favors for this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.
I call to order this meeting of the Building Authority. Our first item of business here is the approval of minutes, noting that we've already had a roll call. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of June first, two thousand twenty-one?
Aye, go ahead. Yeah, second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Pyle, do we have a report?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and open up for any nominations to entertain for a chair and vice chair for the Building Authority for twenty-twenty-two.
I nominate for chair of the Building Authority, Don Christensen, and vice chair, the council member from District Three, soon to be named.
Second.
Properly recognized, and all in favor of that nomination, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we approve that unanimously, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you.
There we go. Thank you for all those who attended.